Okay, I believe it's six o'clock, so we will call the meeting to order. This is the Canton City Council Meeting, March first, 2018. This is our work session. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Holy Father, please bless all the men and women in city government. We especially pray tonight for our law enforcement who put themselves in harm's way. I am so thankful for each one of these brave persons. In your name, amen.
Amen. Ms. McGruder, do you have any public service announcements, please?
Thank you. March three is Dumpster Day at Canton City Hall from eight AM to twelve PM. For fun, Cornhole League Play is coming to downtown Canton. Register now for league play beginning Tuesday, March twentieth through May fifteenth in Cannon Park. The seven-week league includes a season-ending tournament with championship trophy and other prizes. You can register at www.cornholeatl.com and click on Canton. CR Music Festival is March three and four, noon to eleven both days, at Etowah River Park. Over twenty hours of live bands, carnival games, rock walls, mechanical builds, and more. For tickets and music lineup, you can go to crmusicfestival.com. Georgia Trust Canton Expedition is Saturday, March twenty-four, nine-thirty AM to five PM. The Georgia Trust invites you to participate in the self-guided tour of beautifully restored homes and intriguing historic sites of Canton during this day-long expedition. Attendees will experience a rich history of Canton and explore a variety of beautifully restored homes from the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries located in the town's National Register Historic District. Explore downtown buildings and intriguing historic places, including Canton Grammar School, a former Georgia Trust Places and Peril Site. Tickets can be purchased for the tour only or to include lunch and a closing reception. You can get your tickets at www georgiatrust.org. The Canton Theater has advanced tickets for Driving Miss Daisy by Alfred Ori and presented by the Cherokee Theatre Company, March nine through eighteen. The tickets are fifteen dollars and eighteen dollars and can be purchased through the website, cherokeetheater.org. The Cherokee County Arts Center, March three. A Night of Laughter, eight, the eighth comedy show. This is an over eighteen-years-old show. Tickets are twenty dollars and you can contact J.R. Cochrane for tickets at comedybyjr@gmail.com. Doors open at six-thirty and the show starts at eight-thirty. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not. We have a proclamation I would like to present. I'd like to read it first and then we'll have Ms. Grisell from Farm Bureau come down and accept the proclamation here, resolution. It has to do with Agricultural Awareness Month. Whereas the prosperity and well-being of this community are dependent upon the mutual understanding and cooperation between two great elements of our society, farmers and urban citizens. And whereas the complexities of their individual problems and the divergence of their activities can be more fully appreciated through better understanding. And whereas understanding and appreciation of each other are necessary if our American way of life is to endure. And whereas Georgia agricultural awareness provides an unparalleled opportunity for farm and city residents to get to know each other better. Therefore, in recognition of the contributions made by rural and urban citizens toward a better life for all, we hereby proclaim March as Georgia Agricultural Awareness Month and March sixteenth, 2018, as Agriculture Day in the City of Canton. Okay. Chief, you have some employee recognitions and then I believe a PowerPoint presentation for us.
I'm gonna leave right here. If I can have Officer Greg Hardidge step forward. Handle it this way. Officer Hardidge, if you can face the audience, sir. Officer Hardidge came to us about three or four weeks ago, went through our background process, and we really feel that he's going to be an excellent fit for our organization. He comes to us with nearly four years' experience with the Cobb County Police Department. So, he's doing exceptionally well in our FTO program and here in the future, we'll be out solo on the road protecting the citizens of Canton. So, just wanted you and our citizens to attend it tonight to meet him. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you. Usually I do an update or a crime report from the month before, and this, tonight, I'm going to give you our 2017. This is our first annual operational report that our staff built, and I'm going to go over some highlights of this report you have before you. Population and calls for service is our first slide, our first subject. As you can see in slide number two there, give you a couple of bits of information. U.S. Census Bureau, the population, fourteen point seven percent of our population, it's increased from 2010 to 2016. And as you can see there, it has gone up every year since. We put those averages together and looked out. We don't have the official population report for 2017 yet, but through some calculations, the reported is twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty that we've served. Next. Slide three is our calls for service. Between the years of 2011 and 2017, our calls for service have increased seventeen point five percent. Three percent from 2016 to 2017. As you can see in the slide right there, is our call for service breakdown. The first top, the top of that is our monthly breakdown from 2017, and then you see the calls for service, how they've increased for the years of 2011 through 2017. Next. I'm sorry, next slide, please, again. Crime comparison. I thought it was very important to go back and compare our crime for the last number of years, give you a breakdown of our crime for 2017. As I told you before, in our UCR Part One crimes, which a Part One crime through the Uniform Crime Reports through the FBI is, are basically eight crimes. Murder, rape, armed robbery, aggravated assault, theft of motor vehicle, theft, and burglary. Those are the, that's what a UCR Part One crime is. So, with our database, as you can see there, our Part One crimes for 2017, broken down, you'll see on the next slide, I believe it's six hundred and sixty, maybe it's seven hundred and seventy-five Part One crimes. Our calls for service has increased from 2011 to seventeen point five percent. Our population since 2010 has increased fourteen point seven percent. We really feel like we've established in 2017 a good working relationship with our citizens. A lot of our outreach programs, we feel like it's made it safer for our citizens to reach out and report crime to us with those efforts. Our crime between 2016 and 2017 increased nine point nine percent. That is an increase of seventy reports between sixteen and seventeen. Out of the seventy reports, sixty of those were property and ten of those were person or violent crimes. Out of the person or violent crimes, the majority of those are going to be domestic violence situations where an arrest has been made and we have cleared the case. Out of the sixty property crimes, the majority of those have been shoplifting. It's followed by our entering auto calls. Again, like I said, shoplifting is the highest of our increase, and from my research, many of the actors of these crimes have been outside of the city of Canton. Next. Thought it was important to break down a crime per one thousand residents in an area comparison. You'll see two simple slides there. In 2017, twenty-eight-one, twenty-eight point one crimes per one thousand. Below that is a comparison, as you can see, what's at Canton and area, other areas, cities are similar size and population. Next. Our Criminal Investigations Division, which is under Support Bureau, does an excellent job of investigating our cases. There's a small breakdown of the cases that our investigators, our detectives, I'm sorry, investigated in 2017. They had ninety-six arrests out of the cases, out of the four hundred and forty cases that the detectives investigated, and seventy-one percent of those were cleared in some fashion or another, which is in standing with national standards. Next. Go to the next one, please. Professional development training is one of the, one of our philosophies, is a well-trained professional officer is going to serve our community and be there for our community, top-notch officers to serve. We had eight, as you can see in the breakdown here, our personnel and our employees, not just sworn personnel, but also administrative employees, received over eight thousand, almost nine thousand hours of training this year. We had numerous promotions. We had two supervisors receive an FBI, their FBI Executive Development Certificates, which is Trilogy Award, over a hundred hours, a hundred and twenty hours of training. We had a sergeant receive a master's degree and two officers received a bachelor's degree in 2017. Next, please. Our community outreach and our programs and partnerships, I'll just touch on a few. Everything ends with a cop, as you've seen, I'm sure, on our Facebook page. But our bus stop with a cop, I just kind of highlighted it. It was recognized at a, at the State Administrator's Conference in Macon in early February and at a regional conference in Kennesaw, Georgia, earlier also in the month. We have a community survey in seventeen that will continue in 2018 and years to come. It's for communication and feedback from our residents about how we're doing, how's our service to our citizens. And last year, we reached over twelve hundred citizens, which is a good mix of those citizens that are outside our city and citizens that are inside our city. And it really has paid off, some good feedback on how we can improve and better our service to the community. Next. Next, please. You see a breakdown there of our community meetings and the numbers that one of our, again, one of our philosophies is staying very active in the community and coming up with sometimes some outside-of-the-box thinking about things that we can do to engage and build trust and relationships with our community. You see the numbers before you there. We have, I feel like we have a very robust social media platform and press platform that we get information out to our media. Very beneficial in helping us maintain our transparency. That's one of the big things, that we want to be transparent before our community, the community to know what we're doing, know what's going on in the community, any emergencies that are going on, and this is through good communication and we get good service feedback also through our social media platform. Last year, as you can see there in the slide and in the chart, we released over one hundred press releases, three hundred tweets through Twitter. We also released information through Instagram and over six hundred Facebook posts. It's very important, as we have throughout the year, to recognize our officers that serve this community and our employees. In this past year, through our awards program, you see some of our personnel that received awards. In addition to that recognition, we had seven officers recognized for lifesaving awards before, here in Mayor, before Mayor and Council. Twenty-five officers recognized for letters of commendation here and also five officers received Employee of the Quarter during 2017. That's the end of the presentation. I was going to see if anyone has any questions. I'm not trying to not take up too much time. I just want to say, I can speak for everyone at the Canton Police Department, is that we really are humbled and honored to serve this community. We're very humbled and very appreciative of the support Mayor and Council and the city managers have given us, and we're going to work harder in 2018 to improve a lot of this crime comparisons and also to serve this city better. So, that's all I have, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Very good. Good report. Next, Adam, consideration to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to that? Have a motion to prove as presented. Is there a second? Mr. Young made the second. Mr. Grant made the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. You have in your agenda package the council meeting draft minutes from February the fifteenth, 2018. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? Have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. Mr. Sd has made the second. Ms. Wilson made the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, exception of Mr. Goodwin, who is on his way, I understand. Informational purposes, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board update. Ms. Irene Stapp, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Parks and Rec have been getting together, and we have come up with some recommendations for Etowah Park and Heritage Park. As you can see, we're looking at doing seasonal recreational programming. We think that would be a great idea at Etowah Park. And at Heritage, we're looking at riverfront improvements. We're looking at expanding for parking, and then we want to put some exercise equipment for those who are running the tracks and have a little place to do some exercise. And if Mayor and Council are supportive of these ideas and items that we have listed, Parks and Rec, along with city staff, will bring a budget and funding proposal back to you for May fifteenth for your approval. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, anyone? We appreciate the work you all do, and I really do. I mean, you know, it's just great to have a commission, Recreation Commission now, to help make decisions about what is really needed in our parks and everything. I think that's, it helps this council an awful lot. We appreciate your input. Anyone else have a question or anything? You did a good job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Okay. Financial statements are in your agenda package for January. If you have any questions, our chief financial officer is here to answer any of those. Anyone have any questions or comments? These are for informational purposes only. Okay. Ten-minute public input, Mr. Mark Harris.
Good evening. My name is Mark Harris. I represent the Harris Group. We are the developers and owners of Academy and Main, which is the development here on the corner of Main and Academy. I'm here tonight to ask the council permission that we work on Sunday. I wasn't aware that we had a ordinance for not work on Sunday, so we have a steel erection group that's coming into town from out of town, and it's a two-step process. So, my request is that we have a portion of the street on Archer, from the corner of Archer to Main, closed for four hours tomorrow, and then on Sunday, permission to offload the rest of the steel onto the site. The problem right now with the site is that we've moved a lot of dirt around and it's rained for two weeks solid, so it's very difficult to get this heavy equipment in, and it actually sinks into the soil, so it's, the trucks are getting stuck over there right now. And that's my request.
Which, where would you be closing a portion of Archer or a portion of Academy?
A portion of Academy from Archer to Main, which is about a hundred yards.
Well, one lane's pretty much closed anyway, right?
Part of the time.
Every time I go by there, there's cars there, but it's not a problem for me because I see the progress you're making.
We could actually get by with one lane tomorrow unless the truck protrudes a little more out into the lane. We just wanted to be safe, but we manage that as we do that, so.
Yeah, okay.
We've done it twice so far.
And on your Sunday work, is that just this coming Sunday or is it every Sunday?
Just this Sunday, but if it is possible, knowing the season of rain, to get maybe another couple of Sundays, that would be great. But we're not asking to the end of the project, which is June, for Sunday work. We're just asking for this one Sunday, but if we could get two Sundays or three Sundays, that would be great.
And the hours you would be working on that Sunday?
Probably seven to four, seven to five. Or we'll work around your perimeters, I mean.
Okay, right. Ms. McGruder, you have something?
I did. I wanted to ask what hours you were planning to work on Sunday.
Ma'am?
I wanted to know what hours you were planning to work on Sunday, and you answered that question.
Okay.
And seven AM to about five PM.
Would eight to five be satisfactory with you?
I think eight would be better in that there's still some residential people living there.
Nine would be better, would it?
It would, but...
It's Sunday morning, I mean, you know.
I know, Sunday mornings are precious.
And that's this coming Sunday, so we need to do something. We won't be back together before Sunday, you know.
What is the degree of residential remaining intact? Are there people still living there?
Yeah, there's folks still living in some of that.
On Hill Street Circle, there's four houses that the tenants have moved out of. We have closed all the houses on Hill Street Circle and Hill Street Court. Remaining four houses, the rest of the tenants, my understanding, will be out by the fifteenth of March.
So, there are four remaining, four residents?
Four remaining.
On Hill Street Circle?
Sir?
On Hill Street Circle?
Well, one is on Hill Street Court, the rest of them on Hill Street Circle.
One of them was on which one now?
Sir?
You said, you said the rest of them were on Hill Street Circle?
Yeah, there's three on Hill Street Court, and there's five on Hill Street Circle.
Okay.
So, one on Hill Street Court is already vacated, and then there are three others that are vacated as well on Hill Street Circle.
So, the purpose of this is just to unload the steel?
Oh, well, that has nothing to do with our project over at Panera Bread, which is on the corner of Academy and Main. That's where we'll be parking the steel truck. It has nothing to do with the neighborhood.
Right, but that, the steel clanging on the ground is going to, the noise of that's going to travel.
I couldn't hear that.
The noise from the steel clanging on the ground as it's unloaded is going to travel. It could disturb residents in the nearby area and across the street then on Riverdale. It's going to be a very noisy project, so.
I probably wouldn't have a problem, I don't want the rest of the council, I probably wouldn't have a problem with nine to four or something like that.
I don't have a problem with it. I just want to be considerate of the residents still in the area.
Let me see exactly, once again, where we're talking about, just on Sunday or the weekend or the whole weekend that you're wanting?
No, just on Sunday. That's what we're requesting because of the logistics of the truck that delivers the steel. The other part of that is on tomorrow, Friday.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. That they are able to offload in a certain area, the erector, the crane that comes in will be there on Sunday.
Right. What are the hours tomorrow you need?
I'm sorry?
What's the hours you need it tomorrow?
Tomorrow, in the morning, say eight to twelve.
Well, since it's subemergency, I'd like to make a motion that we honor his request on Saturday and, I mean, tomorrow and Sunday. Nine to four on Sunday, eight to twelve tomorrow.
That's good. That would work great.
I do want to say that I sympathize with you with all the rain, and I know that it's put you behind. And I believe our rationale for not opening, for not having business on Sunday was so that we would not disturb the people who are home on the weekend, but I can understand that this would be a time when we might want to alleviate that, so I second your motion.
Okay. Mr. Goodman made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Grant?
Question about tomorrow, eight to twelve. You saying Main to Archer on Academy Street?
Archer to Main Street on Academy.
Academy, so Academy would be closed.
It's one section, which is about a hundred and twenty-five yards from Main Street to Archer.
I just...
That section there.
I had a question if that would affect, if we had any school buses going down Academy Street at that time.
Well, we have someone out there that's on the street managing all that, so we've experienced school buses coming through and they have managed that and allowed them to come through, but we have someone on the street directing traffic, full-time.
You're going to have one lane open anyway, right?
We have one lane open. The only reason that we would want to even fully close it is if the truck protrudes a little over the half-lane. That's it. That would be the only reason. I'm just being precautious.
And then what, the motion on the table, what were the hours for Sunday?
Nine to four.
Nine to four?
Anyone else have anything? We have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, under old business decision and possible action of nonprofit funding policy, Mr. Peppers?
You have a copy of a memo at your seat that we finalized today between my office and the CFO, and what we've tried to do in the memo, we don't, first of all, we don't expect you to take any action on this tonight, but we did want to give you as much background information on how the city currently has relationships, whether they be financial or not, with nonprofits. What we try to look at as it relates to nonprofit funding are two particular tests. One of those is under the state constitution, which is the gratuitous clause, which basically says a public entity can't just give a gift to the private sector without any type of service or recompense. And the second is whether or not funding to a nonprofit is related to... And the second is whether or not funding to a nonprofit is related to the expense of hotel taxes for a tourism-related purpose. And so, we've put some of those definitions in here. I've outlined in this memo some existing relationships that we have with nonprofits. For instance, the city has a relationship with the Cherokee County Chamber of Commerce. We have been members of the Chamber of Commerce as a governmental entity, probably since it was created, along with the other cities. They do get a small portion of our hotel motel taxes, which they're supposed to use for promoting tourism related to the city of Canton. I've also listed in here the Art Center, Historical Society, groups like Canton Main Street, for instance, which are groups that were created by the city. Canton Tourism is the same way. The Downtown Development Authority is not a traditional nonprofit, but it is a, a public entity under state law. Tree Commission being a group. One group, for instance, that we have a partnership with to some extent, the Boy Scouts. As you know, they have the scout hut that's on City Parkland at McCandless Park. And also, when our explorers, for instance, from the police department go to an explorers event, a training event or a conference, those are handled under the foundation of Boy Scouts of America. So, we do have a financial transaction there, but it's a conference-related type event. We do have some relationships with nonprofits as it relates to professional organizations. So, groups like Georgia Municipal Association is a nonprofit, uh, the Georgia Government Finance Officers Association, City County Managers Association, Association of Zoning Administrators. In those instances, they're professional organizations that we may have a financial interaction with, but it's in exchange for professional development or training as it relates to individual departments or staff within the city. We have some instances where we have relationships with nonprofits as it relates to special events. And those come in various areas. So, it could be anything from the city sponsoring or purchasing a table at the Chamber's annual meeting and sending city representatives to that event, or Canton Tourism participating as a sponsor of River Fest, and those funds being used for advertising under the tourism definitions, uh, as, as noted. Couple other examples that we have may be more in kind related. So, for instance, the Lions Club puts on the Christmas Parade. In that instance, we provide public safety and public works as part of the event. Even though it's not a city event, there's a city benefit to the event, and so we provide those services at no cost. We have had in the past fee waivers. So, as it relates to water and sewer, there's this very little detail in the ordinance that says that basically the city manager can waive a fee in there if they see a, a public benefit. Historically, that's not happened. The city manager, if there's been a fee waivers, brought it before the mayor and council for you to approve. But there have been a couple of instances where the city has waived a tap fee for a nonprofit in the past, so I listed that. What we have done is basically laid out, um, a draft of a policy, which is what you would see on the last page. And in this instance, we would put this policy in the city's finance policy, our financial policy, as a, as a section in there. And so, basically, the breakdown of this policy is that, you know, we, we understand that nonprofits do good in our community, but we also understand that since we are the holders of public funds, we have to evaluate any relationship we might have with a nonprofit using what we've laid out as a two-pronged test. And so, that test is, one is it a gratuity? And two is the spending related to something that can be covered under the hotel tax as it relates to those purposes. So, what we've laid out in here is that if a nonprofit would like to request funding from the city, they'd do so in writing. That would include the background as it relates to their nonprofit status, any certificates that they might have on their nonprofit status, their most recent audited financial report, and a detail of the request that they're making. That would be submitted to the CFO. The CFO's gonna turn around and he's gonna evaluate that request based on that two-pronged approach. Is it hotel tax eligible? Is it a gratuity? If it's hotel tax eligible, he would bring that request before council and basically say, is this something that you want to move on now? And if so, do we have any reserve funds in our hotel tax that we can expend on it? Or if this is something you want to look forward to in a future year, we'll make it a budget consideration for next year's hotel tax budget. If it's a gratuity, he's gonna provide the information to me and I'll report back to you on why the request can't be, uh, can't be dealt with because it's a gratuity issue. So, that's kind of the outline of that policy. Bob?
I, I would like to make one suggestion is, because any, we can, uh, give money to any nonprofit as long as the public benefit. And typ, as you mentioned, and some, we have memorandum of understandings with some of them. So, the policy might need to contemplate, because the, if the CFO decides it's a gratuity, that's not really the end of it. Because it wouldn't be a gratuity if we were able to do a memorandum of understanding. So, perhaps we could ask the nonprofit to present us a proposal for what they're gonna do for the city. For instance, the, uh, the Family Violence Center asked for money. We could do a memorandum of understanding that they would be providing services to City of Canton residents that need those services.
Even though, but we couldn't pay for it with hotel motel tax?
No, no. That's why I'm saying they'd have to come. It'd have to be an actual agreement. I'm just saying the policy could contemplate doing an agreement so it doesn't just end with the CFO saying, well, that would be a gratuity. Because it wouldn't be a gratuity if we had a memorandum of understanding.
So, so one that I did not list under here that, that I thought of this afternoon, and I apologize for not putting it in here, is the YMCA, for instance. They're a nonprofit organization. We have a contract with them to basically operate, um, a recreation center. And so, their public benefit to that extent is that they're providing the service to operate that recreation center. And so, it's not necessarily a gratuity because they are providing a public service.
Well, I don't believe we have a contract with them either, anyway.
There's authority.
There's a public contract. And we're not an authority, so I, I have, I have a little concern about, other than, uh, having an agreement with people for the hotel motel tax where you have tourism, is, is the, this council picking and choosing nonprofits to give money to for our taxpayers? I have a little bit of problem with that. I mean, we may pick this nonprofit over here and say, we may, I mean, they may do great things, don't get me wrong. But is it up to us really to pick this nonprofit over this nonprofit, you know? Somehow you gotta draw the line and have some pretty distinct policy.
And there is one, there is one note at the bottom of this recommendation, and that's basically that we're not gonna apply this process as it relates to those nonprofits that are professional organizations where a city staff member is receiving some type of training or there's some direct correlation with their job as it relates to that expense, so.
What would be an example of that?
Um, if Ken Patton goes to the Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators Conference where they learn about changes to zoning laws across the state, he's gonna pay a registration fee to that organization. That organization might actually make a profit off the conference, but they put it back into the organization for the membership of that organization, which are public staff members to learn about zoning. So, there actually is a public benefit to that.
Yeah, he's buying something at that point, though.
Pardon?
He's buying something.
Correct. He's getting something.
It's not just-
It's not a donation. It's a purchase of some type of educational credit or the purchase of some type of training. And I just wanted to make it clear in there that that's not gonna be covered under this nonprofit policy, of course.
And, and Mayor, I think you said what I was trying to say in a much more clear, a clearer way, which is there's always the possibility of a contract. If somebody came to you and said, I'm gonna do this for the city, and the city council could say, well, in exchange for that, we would pay something. And the council could always say, well, that's not enough of a benefit or whatever. But so, this policy would have, this was the, the two prongs would just be for the CFO to go ahead and write a check. So, he's only, you would really only be spending tourism money?
Well-
Because it would have to meet both prongs?
So, what this outlines is if the CFO thinks that it's a gratuity, CFO will let the city manager know, the city manager will report back to council, this is why we can't do this. Now, council at that point could turn around and say, but it sounds like there is something that they are providing on, on here that could be a public benefit, that maybe we do want to have a contract with them.
And, and, and you may could define that as a benefit that's not available to, in general, to residents besides Canton residents, which is kind of what we've been-
Well, we entertain any request, I guess, anyway. I mean, we may be able to tell them, you know, it's very unlikely because this has been our policy, but if you want to ask, certainly, you know? Mr. Grant, you have something?
Yes, I was just wondering, like, would the relationship with the Boy Scouts of America, free use of the hut at McCandless Park in exchange for sponsor organizations related to Canton Police Explorers, would that be an example of? I mean, that-
We have, we have actually done things with the Boy Scouts before where we have said we've waived fees in exchange for a maintenance of the trails, the, in, in Bowling Park. That they've asked for, but they've done jamborees there on Bowling, at Bowling Park before, and the fees would have been pretty substantial. And they asked us to waive those, and we did a little short agreement that said, we'll waive that in exchange for your continued maintenance of the trails.
And at one time, they managed the city's recycling program out of the scout hut. So, there have been kind of an exchange of things in the past with the Boy Scouts. The difference there is we're dealing with the local Boy Scout club. As we relate to the explorers, we're dealing with a national organization, and we're actually paying for a conference registration. They just happen to be the entity that covers that event.
I mean, I know we do fee waivers and, and things like that, and I think if there are short agreements, then that would cover it. But there are the things where we like to, you know, let nonprofits use the city's stage and, and things like that nature. So, I just wonder on those, does it get in a gray area or?
I would assume they're using a stage, or they'd be, it'd be a, almost a tourism attraction event, wouldn't it?
Well, so what we've done since I've been here is we haven't given the stage to anyone. Unless it has been what we consider to be a co-sponsored event. So, we consider the Christmas Parade and the Fourth of July Parade to be a co-sponsored event because we're already providing public safety and public works. So, we're not gonna charge you for a stage for that event. It's, it's, there's a public benefit. If somebody's having an event like they are this weekend down at Edgewood River Park and they want to utilize the stage, they pay a fee for the stage.
And then on the hotel motel tax, providing a service, will there be like a, a criteria like? I mean, I know they apply for it. This is what they're going to do. But is there one criteria for everyone that, like, this is, this is how they would bring tourism or?
So, there's-
It's usually pretty obvious, but-
There's really only two buckets of money that they can spend. One is promoting tourism conventions and trade shows, and that's a state-defined thing. And so, that's anything, if, if, if they're having an event in Canton and we say, look, we're willing to put some money towards this event because you're gonna do billboards and radio advertising, marketing that particular event, which also markets Canton, we can participate. There's also a section of it that can be used for bricks and mortar type operations. So, for instance, we have an agreement with the Historical Society where we provide them funding, but they also manage a visitor center downtown. So, that's eligible for that expenditure. If it doesn't fit in one of those two categories, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do an agreement with them. Right now, the way it works is if it's related to marketing, we've traditionally had that flow through Canton Tourism. Canton Tourism would make a request for funding for the city, tell us what they're gonna put their funding towards in that year, and we would grant that as one lump sum to them. As it relates to any of these other nonprofit organizations, we have memorandums of understanding with them that basically they outline exactly what they're spending that funding for. And so, if we ever do get, uh, a complaint as it relates to the hotel motel tax, we can go back with our audited financial statements. We go back with copies of those memorandums of understanding and their financials and say, this is what they said they were gonna give to us, and this is what they spent the money on. So, we're covered.
So, those agreements in the, in the past have gone through Canton Tourism under this policy would go through the CFO?
Right now, everything except for those special events have gone through the CFO. The special events have gone through Canton Tourism. But then Canton Tourism's had to turn around and tell us how they're gonna spend the money. What we would like to do moving forward is have everything flow through the CFO so that when somebody goes to spend money, they bring all that information to us. And that's, you know, if you, if you recall, we've significantly cut Canton Tourism's money over the years because we found out that some organizations were double-dipping through that organization and through the city. And so, you know, we've tried to clean that up.
Thanks. I think, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, you have something?
I was just curious of the, the nonprofits that are listed, are, are these the only ones that we're looking at? Are these examples of current ones and that we would be open if another nonprofit, uh, came to us and they were going to provide a tour, a ser, service that would increase tourism, they would be considered?
These are examples that we have worked with in the past.
Right, but we're not married just to the-
No, and we're not saying that we have to work with these necessarily in the future. This is just what we currently do or have done recently.
So, the door could be open for someone else or it could be closed if they didn't provide tourism?
Correct.
I think we're gonna have to be cautious in the foreseeable future on our hotel motel tax because I, I think we're gonna have a very major expense with the Jones Building, particularly with the inside and events that occur, are gonna be occurring there. And the staff that it's gonna take to operate that and, uh, you know, it'll be, you know, if it's a cultural arts and history museum or, or other public events place and whatever other functions, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take some money and it's gonna take some operating expense to heat and air condition that building and everything else. So, I think we, we need to be real cautious about giving away too much hotel motel tax money, just my thought. Okay. Next, next item.
Well, I was just gonna say, what we're gonna do with this, if everybody's okay with the general precepts with it, we'll turn around and we'll revise the finance policy to include this and bring it back to you at a later meeting for approval.
Good. That'd be good. Thanks. Okay, next item, discussion and possible action of municipal services agreement between Cherokee County and City of Canton concerning animal control ordinance. Chief, are you handling that or Billy, are you gonna handle that? Scott, Scott, your name on it, chief?
Yes, sir. Um, we met with the marshal's office, um, last, about the last week and a half. They conducted some roll call training over this agreement here. As you see, it's been signed by, by other, um, I believe the county manager, and I don't know if other cities have signed it, but he brought that to us to present to the mayor, and it's been, I guess, presented tonight. But, um, we met with them, roll call training. We feel comfortable, all officers, our officers, our staff and the Cherokee 911 Center know what to do and who's responsible for what as it relates to any calls for animal control going forward. So, um, uh, I like the idea, obviously, of them taking over the animal controls here in Canton because I think our city has more animal control service calls than any other city in the, in the, in Cherokee. So, um, most definitely, that's, that's it.
You, you would recommend this particular agreement, right?
Yes, sir. Based on my conversations-
You're happy with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was, I was just gonna say a little bit of background. If you recall, we passed this agreement last fall. And then the very first hearing that occurred with a case down in Woodstock under their agreement went before the magistrate, Judge Drane, and he said, I've not seen this agreement, and threw it throughout the court case. And so, basically, between that and this, the county and the judicial, uh, group got together and hammered out their differences. And so, they've just asked us to reapprove the agreement.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone need to vote on this tonight?
On this agreement? We don't have to vote on that tonight, do we, chief? Billy?
You can vote on it tonight or you can wait until the fifteenth. I don't think it matters a whole lot, one way or the other.
Unless, unless it isn't, quote, an emergency, I'd suggest we wait till the fifteenth. I mean, uh, yeah, fifteenth. Okay, thank you.
Before we move, let me just ask, if I have an issue with an animal control, an animal that I think is dangerous, I'm gonna call Canton Police, right? I don't have to call the county marshal. So, I'm not gonna, as a citizen, I'm gonna assume that the city's taking care of everything. If it requires a marshal to come in, Canton Police will take care of that. I don't have to call the county.
No, you just call 911 and, um, and aggressively, like the situation you're talking about, and an officer will respond along with the marshal.
Okay, so, so-
I would say after the fifteenth, once this is, uh, we can, you know, press release or put it on our Facebook page. or put it on our Facebook page, just so citizens have general knowledge of what the new-
But if a resident does contact us about, you know, a dead animal in the roadway or suspicious animal, and they contact the city, we're going to turn around and contact the Marshal's Office.
Yes, after this. Citizens don't have to worry about it. It's all worked out between dispatch and our supervisors.
Well, I mean, if, if you call 911, they're going to contact the Marshal's Office.
Yes.
Okay. The next, next item on the agenda is a discussion of Canton Housing Authority Board appointments. Uh, I have spoken to, uh, each of the three members that are, uh, still within their terms very recently by phone, nothing in writing, but by phone. Each, uh, each was willing, uh, to be reappointed if, if we chose to do so. I would certainly want to appreciate their, uh, service as volunteers on that board and all of them that have served. Uh, we have, we have two new members on there now. And I will, will be making a, um, a determination about the appointment or reappointment of the other three members very soon. Okay. All right, under new business, discussion of case AX 1801 dash 001, proposed annexation of forty-two point oh-two acres by the perilous niece LLC located at twenty-two forty-one, twenty-two forty-three, twenty-two forty-seven, and twenty-two forty-nine coming highway known as Canton Exchange. This is a commercial development on the north side of twenty there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is a request annex of the forty-two, uh, acres that is on the north side of State Route twenty across, across from Canton Marketplace. It is currently, uh, under construction. Uh, part of this project has already received COs and businesses are open.
Anybody have any comments on that one?
Who provides water and sewer over there?
The City of Canton. This property is within, uh, the growth boundary area. It is also within the City of Canton's water service area. It is within the City of Canton sewer service area, and the city is already providing water and sewer to this project.
To your knowledge, that they paid the full fee for the watering sewer, or do you know?
I am not sure at the present time. I'll have that, uh, prior to council making a decision at the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Grant?
That was my question, that this is the same property that we discussed, annexation would be conditioned upon, or the reduction in tap fees would be conditioned upon annexation, which would mean that annexation would have to come first. So I was just curious what the status of that was.
I will get an answer out to all the council members in regards to whether they've paid the full price at this point in time and whether we would have to move forward with reimbursement based upon, uh, the agreements in regards to the reductions.
One other question I had regarding, and I know construction's underway, would be, I think we discussed this a little bit the last time, about the, the sign ordinances and when the property would come in, if it was annexed, would the sign ordinances be covered by the county before? Or would it be covered by the, the city's ordinances, which are more restrictive?
I think that they have already received, received approval for, uh, some signage permit. Uh, there are other signage permits. You have a copy of the comments from Cherokee County. I don't know if you, uh, saw those in regards to, uh, the email earlier. I did place a paper copy there, which Cherokee County has requested that everything that is active through construction or has plans submitted, Cherokee County would continue with that portion of this project through COs and that sort of thing. Anything that were to come after annexation would be permitted through the City of Canton.
Do we have an idea of what percentage of the project has already been permitted? And so that means the county would be getting permitting fees and-
All of, uh, the Big Box Shopping Center, uh, the, uh, one that is already open and operational up front. Then there's another, uh, suite of parcels that's behind the existing open suite that, uh, plans and everything have been submitted to the county. There are three other out parcels, uh, that, uh, somewhere around fourteen to twenty thousand square feet that have not been permitted yet.
I am of the opinion that we probably should, if acceptable with, with, I guess, the applicant perhaps, is to delay that annexation as, as long as we can during this year. And one of the reasons is, is because if we annex that today, we won't get any tax dollars off of that for two, for almost two years. It would be November of nineteen or even December of nineteen before we would get any tax dollars off of it. Now, and I suspect that Cherokee County has already got a substantial amount of the permit fees. And how much of that would, would remain if that would, were all we would get? So, you know, I mean, I still believe that we could, you know, if they paid the full amount for those fees, whatever time that, uh, we agreed to annex them in. And I'm, I'm not saying I don't, I, I support bringing them in, but I think the timing is, is sort of important, too. Uh, we could reimburse, you know, if, if they paid a hundred percent of the, uh, tap fees, and our agreement is that, and I believe it was fifty percent, wasn't it? That we ended up, tried to do thirty and ended up with fifty, then we could reimburse them that at the time the annexation occurred. Does that make any sense to anybody? Can we just try and save a little money? Because we would have, as soon as we annex them in, the services are ours. I mean, we have to provide services to that, and no tax dollars for two years, almost. So, anyway.
I don't, I'm not going to comment on, I don't want to comment on that, so if anybody else, I want to ask another question.
Go ahead.
Is racetrack a part of this?
No.
So is racetrack going to stay in the county, there in the county?
At the present time, yes.
Kind of like the spot, little spot right there?
The racetrack, uh, the Verizon store and the, uh-
AT&T.
AT&T, those, uh-
So they're all still in the county?
Or unincorporated Cherokee County.
Yeah, that's, that's a little spot zoning deal.
Yeah.
On that, would that create an unincorporated island?
No, because those parcels have unincorporated, uh, Cherokee County behind the racetrack that would make the AT&T and Verizon, uh, you know, by themselves not be an island.
So it does connect?
Correct. Behind, or to the north of racetrack down Old Dawes is unincorporated Cherokee County.
So with our recent annexation of the additional parkland, it doesn't create?
Okay. Mr. Cashish?
So two questions. One kind of feeds off what we were talking about with the annexation. So if, and I'm sure this has been discussed, so we get an emergency call. So Canton PD's at target, now there's an emergency, a robbery at racetrack. We, it's, it's, it just seems like one side of the street is, I know I'm stating the obvious, but I, I guess that's just what, what the situation is, right?
Generally, in those situations, there are, uh, intergovernmental agreements in place in regards to police, that sort of thing. Whichever, it's Cherokee County or the City of Canton can respond first. They will show up first, but it's a joint, uh-
Okay.
Effort, if you will, in regards to the provision of the service because of existing intergovernmental agreements.
Okay. And my other question is, in the, the document that we get from the Cherokee County Planning and Land Use, so on page two, it says at the top, it, it talks about, um, the Board of Commissioners voting to have a meeting with the city and desire to, to have an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county to address the completion. What, I guess, is that part of, I'm, I'm just not sure what that means.
If, uh, if council, what Cherokee County asks is there be an intergovernmental agreement entered into as it relates to a breakpoint, if you will, a, as I had mentioned, with everything that's under construction through the county now, uh, and things after they issue COs for those projects would come to the city.
So it's formalizing what you talked about, and then nothing else?
That is correct. If there were to be that intergovernmental agreement, uh, if council wanted to go ahead and annex, they could, uh, with that intergovernmental agreement in place as to who's going to do what with, uh, this project, uh, for the duration.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on that particular issue? Okay, thank you, Ken. And the, the next item is the, uh, would, would be the zoning of that property?
Yes, sir. Uh, the zoning of, uh, this forty-two acres did go before Canton Planning Commission. Uh, the public hearing was held on February nineteenth. Uh, the Canton Planning Commission recommended approval of zoning with a condition that sixteen point five two acres in what I would call the northeast corner of the total forty-two acres be zoned R forty. This sixteen point five two acres is currently zoned R forty in unincorporated Cherokee County. And twenty-five point five five acres be zoned general commercial. And that's where the shopping center and, uh, the parking lot and everything else associated with the commercial development would take place. It mirrors, uh, the same zoning and acreages, uh, as designated in Cherokee County.
What is on the other side of the river from this R forty property? Do you know?
Other side of the river?
And it, doesn't it go back close to the river, or not?
Uh, no, sir, this property, uh, uh, there's quite a few parcels between this and the river.
Okay, it doesn't go back that far.
Some of, uh, Brook Park, uh, kind of windsawed in behind on the north side. And then there are other properties accessible off of Old Dawes on the north side.
Those properties on Old Dawes that would have joined this R forty property, uh, what is there zoning, R forty?
Correct.
They're all R forty?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay, all right.
And there is a thirty-five foot buffer in place already adjacent to, to those off of Old Dawes behind the shopping center with landscaping requirements and that sort of thing in place through Cherokee County.
Okay, Mr. Dye?
Yes, just one thing that occurred to me was we're talking about an intergovernmental agreement, but if, to the extent that these things need to be binding on the developer, we would, I think, need to do it as part of our zoning conditions, that they comply with, uh, whatever requirements the county has put on them in terms of buffer, and make that a zoning condition as well, which binds them to that and doesn't let them play us off against the county.
That makes sense, yeah, we need to do that. Yeah. Right, okay. Oh, anyone else? Next item, review of proposed annual city auction items. Mr. Engel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have before you the list of this year's auction items. We have seven vehicles listed, uh, six regular passenger, one box, truck, van, and some miscellaneous, uh, office equipment to auction. We will be asking for your approval of this list, uh, in two weeks at the voting session.
When, when will the auction be?
Thank you, good question. Uh, for circumstances beyond our control, the auction has actually been moved to May twelfth.
May twelfth?
Not April fourteenth, yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this?
I do. Where's that, which Pepsi machine? Is it the one that faces, faces-
Police station.
The street?
It is a police station.
I know, the, at the police station, is it the one back here or the one that's facing East Marietta? The one that we've had a complaint about, that's the one we're auctioning?
Is it, it's functional, chief?
It's one at the, against the police station in Brown Park?
No, no, it's not that one. It's one that was in the building.
Oh, so the one in Brown Park's going to stay?
It, it's still there, yes, ma'am.
Because we had a complaint about it.
We need to put a little lattice in front of it.
It, it helps fund the explorer program and contributions to the Boy Scouts of America.
So do I hear it?
Anyone else have any comments or questions about the list?
Okay. Next item, review and discussion of, uh, proposed budget amendments, SPOLOX six and impact fee fund.
Uh, Mayor and Council, if I can, uh, jump forward a, a little bit on the next two items. I've, uh, all three of the budget requests, I prepared, prepared a memo that I hope kind of, uh, explains some of those budget requests. The first two items, twelve D and twelve E are somewhat end of year budgets. Uh, item twelve F, getting ahead of myself, item twelve F is a, a budget amendment request for the current fiscal year. But on this one, this is a budget amendment that, uh, takes care of SPOLOX and impact fees as it relates to the, uh, consolidation of the fire department. Um, this, just to clean up some items. And, and those obviously have already been approved by Mayor and Council.
Anybody? Any thoughts, questions? Right now, are you handling all three of them at one time? Is that what you want to do?
Well, no, 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 no. I, I just wanted to comment that-
Okay.
I provided a memo that I hope explains-
You're talking about jumping forward, I thought you were going to do that, okay. Okay, next item on there. Go ahead with the next one.
Item twelve E is the formal year-end budget that clears up, uh, dots the Ts and crosses the Is, if you will. There are a couple of significant items on the year-end budget, some of you have called that. There are a few of the, few items that are significant. Uh, one involved building and safety services that was for a new vehicle, uh, purchased that was needed at the end of the year. Uh, the other item was in information technology, uh, involved some firewall, some, uh, equipment that was needed to be purchased as a recommendation from InterDev, the third-party contractor. The other three items are fairly insignificant, just to, to clean up some amounts.
Okay, any questions? Next item.
And twelve F, uh, is on the current year. It involves the two SPOLOX, SPOLOX six, which is our current SPOLOX, and the upcoming SPOLOX seven. On the SPOLOX six SPOLOX, our current, the older SPOLOX, what this does is we have a projected surplus of approximately two million. It's just shy of two million dollars, what we project. What this is going to do is going to take that amount and dedicate it toward general government buildings so that we can use those funds for existing projects. On SPOLOX seven, the upcoming, what it does instead, we had originally, we did not know what we were going to utilize the funds, uh, for, because SPOLOX seven will collect three months' worth of funds in the current fiscal year. We had originally put those in contingency. So we want to move those from contingency and toward general government buildings. And we'd also like to take a loan from the general fund pooled account to SPOLOX seven to accommodate some extra general government buildings, so we finish up the Jones Building.
So, so are you saying that we, we have about two million dollars roughly above and beyond what we had anticipated getting over our six-year period?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but we can assign that excess to any category we want to? Or should it be based on the percentages that, of the other categories that we had?
As far as I'm aware and based on what I've read, that can be put toward any project, but it has to be an existing project that that SPOLOX-
Because it was a project off SPOLOX six.
Yes, SPOLOX six, correct. It's one of those projects, general government buildings.
Okay, so you don't have to invite it out by-
No, because basically what we have is a SPOLOX six project that's going to cost more money than we thought. And so you can take the excess funds and apply it to that project.
Okay, good. Anyone else on that?
Thank you.
Uh, discussion of certi- certified city of ethics. Uh, we have, over the past years, uh, GMA has a program where, uh, a, a municipality may, uh, adopt their basic code of ethics and, uh, and- it's a very, very weak code of ethics, very generalized, but it does give you a certain sense of, you know, we are a city of ethics. But we do have a, an ethics ordinance in our city as well, and I just thought it was appropriate since it had been, I guess, the last adoption of, of that ordinance was in 2015, that we need to revisit that, to look at it, to make sure that it says what we want it to say and there, whether or not there's anything that needs to come out of it or other things that need to be added to it. So I would just ask that, that each of you take a look at it, review it, and I don't know if you're prepared to discuss it now or even later. Mr. Steeves?
I just had a couple of comments or questions. So today, so I think, I guess I would make an assumption that GMA would also be able to provide us with a lot of best practices and stuff to consider and include.
I don't believe they would do that, but we could ask.
Or, I mean, they probably have a lot of documented sources that we could pull from to compare and contrast, to kind of pick out all the pieces that make, that are appropriate for us, that we could use them as a resource or their resources.
We could try, certainly try to use them as a resource.
And then I actually, so from the standpoint of an ethics board, so is that board kind of engaged when there is an ethics concern?
Only.
Okay.
Yeah. In other words, if someone files a written complaint.
Yeah. Then you would appoint.
Then I would appoint, the council would appoint, and then somebody else would appoint.
Got it.
It's like three, three members or something like that.
Perfect. Yeah, my only other point was, I, you know, it's just there's always, there's best practices and so we could.
Yeah, that, that ordinance is, is not part of GMA, that ordinance, okay?
Agreed. No, I'm fresh from GMA training, so we, we talked about it, so when, when they brought it up, I said, I wonder if we're in ethics, so I had that question.
I just want to make sure everybody, I think, quite honestly, I think these things, particularly that ethics ordinance, needs to be revisited at least every two, two years, you know, so as we have new people coming on, they, they see it, and if there's anything we need to change or add to or take away from, then we have the opportunity to do it. But I think that's, would be a good thing to be able to review it.
I wanted to ask you about the board, too. Is it a sitting board that continues or do you?
No.
Appoint a different board each time you get a complaint?
That's what, that's what the history has been, because, I mean, complaints have been so far apart that, you know, I think, I think your point, it's not been a standing board historically, I know that, and I don't know if it's supposed to be or not. I think it's when you have a complaint filed that that triggers the time to make those appointments.
And then after that complaint is settled, that board goes away?
They go away.
Until the next one.
Right. That's my understanding. Is that right?
The ordinance is to your service, we just don't have complaints every two years. So it ends up being ad hoc because we don't have that many complaints.
But you say that it's term on two years.
That's what the ordinance says, that they serve two-year terms.
You get four complaints if they're two years.
Yeah, they could do that, yeah. And I think the, the third one has to be a member of the bar, right?
At least one of them.
Mayor appoints one, the council appoints one, the two of them pick a third, approved by the council, and at least one of them has to be a lawyer.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Grant?
So I was looking at this, and a lot, a lot of this is 2001, but it looks like there were some updates in 2011, is that correct, to the ordinance?
I think that there was a 2001, and I think this is, Bobby, was this not adopted from 2001?
It is. We, there would have been periodic changes to what GMA suggests you to have in terms of being a city of ethics, and whenever they changed the form, the city, and that's what we did in 2015, they had made some kind of tweak to the proposed model ordinance.
This, this basic model ordinance?
It's a model ordinance.
Did come from GMA?
Correct.
Okay.
It originated from.
I may be wrong. Was this a, a model ordinance from GMA?
Originally it was, and then, and then they've changed the model ordinance periodically, and I believe in 2015, there was something we had to redo to qualify, continue to qualify.
Oh, okay.
We were a city of ethics before. We were recognized and affirmed by GMA as being a city of ethics.
We are now.
Right.
But this is one of. We still are. If it's every, is it four years or five years? Every four years you have to reapply.
And, and you have to have this ordinance or some, or some similar ordinance to be qualified, so.
So we had a resolution in 2015, does that mean 2019 would be?
We'd have to re-up, yeah.
So the resolution is to adopt the ordinance?
And whatever else they may have suggested that we do.
Okay. Because I didn't see on the ordinance any 2015 updates, but the resolution was 2015, so.
And, and so maybe we just reaffirmed it. Maybe you just have to reaffirm it every four years because we already have the ordinance.
Okay.
It looks like the first one was a 2015.
I think that's when they started the program.
And then it was 2011, then 2015, right? I mean, I'm talking.
2015 was a resolution, not an ordinance, right, Mr. Grant? That's what you were.
That's what I'm saying, that the resolution is from 2015, but I see, on the ordinance, I see 2001 and 2011, so I was just saying if we had to do a resolution to adopt updates from 2015, I don't see those 2015 updates in the ordinance.
I can, I can figure out what we did in 2011 because I would have been a city attorney.
Review and make sure we didn't miss anything, or if I'm understanding correctly.
I doubt that we made any changes in 2015, but you had to re-up in 2015 just to be a city of ethics.
Okay.
I think that's what happened.
Yes, in 2011, we did do an ordinance, obviously, and I can go research what we did in 2011.
My understanding is that, I may be wrong, but I read a little bit upon this, to, to the resolution and be, to qualify, the resolution is basically those five things that's on this resolution you?
That's my understanding.
Agree to adhere to. And then the ordinance, I think, is up to us whether we want to have it or not, was my understanding. I just, I wondered if they both, they need to be in sync or not, so. Yeah.
And, and that was, and I remember now, it's because the code of ethics had not been done in the MUNIC code, and so we discovered that, and then to put it into MUNIC code, we had to change the numbers to make it fit.
So in 2011, it's just the numbers changed?
Correct. Yes, that's right. I remember that now.
I would suggest it may be a good idea to look at the ordinance if it, if it didn't change since 2001, so it may be good for all of us to look at and review it. Sure.
Right. I mean, there's no rush or anything, but it, you know, would like the council to take a look at it and see if there's things you need to leave in or leave out, you know? What's that?
Unless we change something, which is.
Right. In nineteen. Right. Yeah. Okay. All righty. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. A couple items. I do have one, one item that I need some action on tonight. We have, as you know, the Georgia Trust is doing their historic tour expedition here in the city of Canton at the end of March. We had a request from Canton Tourism to reach out to the Georgia Trust, given that a number of our sites are a little bit of a distance apart, to see if the Georgia Trust would be okay with providing transit service for that event, have a shuttle basically to run. These are going to historic homes, and not every home's going to have parking available and what have you. We did a little bit of research, and CATS, the local area transit that Cherokee County controls, was willing to provide that service to us, basically about $200 a bus, and so that's the bus and the driver for the six hours and what have you. Canton Tourism is actually budgeted to pay for that because it is bringing people in from outside the community, so it's good use of those funds. Problem is, the county has to have an agreement with us to use the shuttles, and so they've given us a draft of that agreement, and you have a copy of it up there for you, but basically it just allows us to go into contract with the county so that they can set aside the drivers and the buses for that day and those times to provide that service, and we'll use Canton Tourism funds to pay for the service. But they'd like for us to vote on it tonight so that they can get the contract approved by the commission next week, and everything will be set by the end of the month. So if council's okay with that, I would ask that you add it to the agenda and that you authorize the mayor to sign that agreement.
Have a motion?
Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, you wanted us to vote on that, did you?
Yes, we need to vote on it tonight.
If not, those in favor signify and saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members vote for the motion.
Wanted to give you an update on our current paving projects. We had one project, one significant project left in our paving schedule that we were working on at the end of last year, which was some paving in downtown Canton, to include some paving on East Main Street that was recommended by our consultant that we brought in last year. We've put that project on hold because we don't want to pave that area and then turn around if we decide to move forward with some of the I and I improvements and then rip up some of that new paving. And so in speaking with Public Works Director, we felt comfortable that the existing paving's fine for right now, but we did allocate funds for that project, so we started looking around for another quick project that we could do that would be of good benefit to the public. And we identified a section of roadway that's basically between Hamilton State Bank and South Canton Funeral Home on Marietta Highway, there at the intersection of Univeter and Butterworth. As you know, we paved from approximately Dairy Queen down to South Canton Funeral Home earlier this year. In this project, we would pave that, that stretch from basically Hamilton State back up to South Canton, but in doing so, we would actually build up the shoulder on, on a portion of the right-hand side of the roadway as you're going up north, and that would allow us to create with striping a longer turning lane. So that if you're coming from exit fourteen and you're turning left onto Butterworth, instead of having, say, five or six cars in the turning lane, you might be able to get ten or twelve cars to turn left, which should improve that intersection. It also allows us to have a little bit better dedicated turning lane right onto Univeter. That project is approximately $181,000, and if council doesn't have any problems, we're going to go ahead and move forward with it. That way we can get it, try to get it done the week of spring break while school's out. I would let you know that, I'll mention a little bit more on that roadway in a second, but our goal is to try to get as much of that roadway done because that is one of the years we get a lot of complaints about potholes, and that particular intersection, we get a lot of complaints about stacking, and so we think we'll be able to deal with the stacking and the paving under our current contracts. Yes, sir. Mr. Grant?
And you may cover this later, but the area just beyond Dairy Queen and going, I guess, north, so this is not this area, this is on the other side?
This is going, this is going from South Canton Funeral Home south.
Okay.
And so.
So what's that, that area going north beyond Dairy Queen is in horrible shape? Is that, is that on the, is that on the schedule?
That, that's the next item I'm going to bring to you. So as you know, we get funding from the state every year from their local maintenance infrastructure grant, or Lamig. This year, we'll get about $275,000 from Lamig, and then we have a 30% match on top of that. We did have a little bit of issue with GDOT where we were given a date for our application by one employee, and it was not the proper date, and so GDOT called and said, we don't have your application in yet, and we sent them the information where they gave us the date, so they asked us to go ahead and fill out the application and get it into them. We have, we have recommended moving from Dairy Queen to Herndon, which is the north section of that road, as part of that Lamig application. It's about $375,000 to pave, and so using those funds, Lamig and a portion of SPOLOX, that would get us from Hamilton State Bank all the way up to Herndon Road. And as you recall, GDOT's going to be paving from basically twenty at Herndon Road all the way to exit twenty this year, starting in May. So that's going to cover a significant stretch of commonly-used road by applying Lamig to that northern section and applying our remaining SPOLOX fund from last year to the southern section of that road. Having said that, what we will likely do in the 2018 paving program is give to you an alternate which allows us to also pave from where we stop at Hamilton State Bank back to where we pick up the road at exit fourteen, which will be a little bit more expensive project because there's a number of lanes as you get back towards the, the exit. But if we're able to do that as part of SPOLOX, that'll get one of the largest sections of road that the city maintains with the highest volume of traffic paved this year. So if, if everybody's okay with that, the mayor can sign the Lamig application, we're not really binding the city unless we get the funds, but that should give us the ability to pave that entire section of roadway this year.
Right. Even though some of that, some of that's in the county?
Well, the entire roadway is in the city, even though some of the adjacent properties are in the county. It's all ours for maintenance.
So all the road is in the city?
All the road on Marietta Highway is in the city for maintenance between Herndon and exit fourteen.
Just off the road, it's spot zone?
Yeah, yes. There could be some unincorporated pockets on either side.
Okay.
Is there any concern about that?
Anyone have any problem with that? I think, I think it's a great idea, because I'd really like to see that Univeter stacking lane there, coming north repaired. That, that's been needing that for a long time. People always running out of the road on the right side and everything else and keeping that shoulder torn up. I think it's a good idea. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. The next item, I did want to let council know and, and let the public know, as you recall, when the reservoir was built, there were a, a number of lawsuits as it related to mitigation sites that were part of that development. We received a judgment in one of those suits, which was for the Turner tract of land. The total judgment in that suit was $1.8 million. The city was responsible for 25% of that, or $468,000. We've carried that as a liability of the city for many, many years, knowing that, you know, at some point it was going to be adjudicated through the courts, and that was a judgment from the courts. We utilized the remaining funds from CBA bond to pay that issue, and so it's been handled.
Just one point of clarification on that. That, that's a total amount which includes money that would have been paid in with the condemnation that was done in 2010.
Correct.
So we, at this point, we just paid the difference.
Right. And we won't have that liability moving forward on our books.
What funds did you use?
There were some funds remaining in the CBA Canton Building Authority from the bond proceeds from part of that work, and we utilized those funds to pay that debt and close out that bond. Okay? All right. I was asked for an update on our trail system and the Riverwalk project, so I wanted to give you that. We have reached out to Atkins to provide to us a task order proposal as it relates for the section of the trail between Etowah River Park and Interstate 575. As you recall, there's a section of that trail where there's some erosion issue on the bank, and we've got the railroad, and we encroach in the railroad right of way. We're going to have to do some erosion control there. So Atkins, since they have structural engineers as part of their team, is going to be taking over that section of that trail. One of the things that we're asking them to do is provide us basically a list of any type of permitting we're going to have to have as it relates to either building a wall and filling in as it relates to the river, or doing piers and building a bridge section over that. That'll give us the blueprint for the last piece of our RFQ as it relates to the Riverwalk because basically, we're going to have to build a Riverwalk in that section, if that makes sense. So we're using that as the test case for information that we'll have to have for the RFQ for the rest of the site. We've been working with community development, we've pulled together some of the basics of the RFQ, but we want to make sure we have all the permitting pieces necessary to have in that document to provide to any other qualified bidders for the rest of the Riverwalk project. project. We expect to have the information back from Atkins in the next couple of weeks. Hayes and James will continue to work from five seventy-five eastward on the new park land, on their designs, but Atkins will pick up from the bridge back, just because they have structural engineers in their team that can do that particular line of work.
So a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So we, basically, you picked the most complex one as the use case to, to figure out what would then be required for permitting and everything else for the rest of the area?
Correct. So in other parts of the city, we're not likely to be dealing with the railroad.
Right.
And we're not likely to be dealing with GDOT. And so if we know the most complex side of the permitting that we have to do, is it relates to EPD and all of those, then we should be able to scale everything back for the RFQ for the rest of the Riverwalk.
Thank you.
And, and, and one thing I did want to note in there, and, and what Parks and Recreation talked about at their last meeting in particular, is really pushing that mindset of hand-clearing as much of the riverfront as we can in our parks to open up that visibility. And so some of the things that they've talked about is hand-clearing out some of that underbrush so that there's more visibility of the river from the parks, creating more opportunities for picnic tables and swings and benches as close to the river as we can get so that people can actually experience that. And so we feel like if we can clean up that area of Etowah River Park and Heritage Park up front, then that's going to give us even more support for that Riverwalk section as it moves forward.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I would like to say that I'm extremely pleased to announce that the Senate Bill four eighteen failed in the Senate. This was the bill which would have prohibited local government from passing any ordinances banning the retail sale of any puppies and kittens, among other things. I mean, it, it would have, it very likely could have affected a, a number of, of different issues in the city. Anything that was under the Department of Agriculture or some other departments, you know, were actually, we, we wouldn't have been able to do any regulating at all, you know, and tobacco, food trucks, and are all involved there. And the question was, you know, maybe we could, maybe we couldn't, but it sure seemed like we couldn't. And the Senate apparently concurred with that. And I'd like to thank everyone that certainly sent a, a letter to our legislative delegation. And we need to send, and I will send, a personal letter to Senators Albers, Senators, Senator Beach, and, and Senator Thompson, who all three voted no on that particular issue. The Senate Bill four eighteen failed in the Senate, as I understand, like thirty-four to nineteen. Also, it's my understanding that House Bill nine forty-eight, which was a companion bill to that, which basically said the same thing, had it going from both sides there, would have, I mean, it, it did not make a floor vote, as I understand, by crossover day. So it was, you know, it should be dead. Unless they try to attack that information on some bill that did make crossover date, which is entirely possible, but I don't think that will happen in as much as the bill was defeated so dramatically in the Senate. So I think, I think we're safe this, this year. Next year would be another year, though. So I will, I, I did have a resolution for tonight, but since we had, and I thought it was a well-written one, didn't you? You saw that, didn't you? But it, it, it was really in opposition to those two bills and, and reasons for doing that. But I don't think we really need to do that this time. We'll save it for next year if we need it. But I did want to, I did want to thank everybody that had, had helped with this, and, and especially those senators who took that. Brandon Beach, I was in an ARC board meeting yesterday, and actually got a call from Brandon Beach during that meeting, right after the vote. So I, I really appreciated that, to tell me. And he did say he'd gotten an awful lot of emails and letters and stuff about that. And he really, really appreciated those personal emails, not the ones or, or where, you know, somebody types up a, an opposition and gets you to sign it, and then they mail four hundred of them in at one time, just to like, you know? He liked the, really, the, the personal thing, that people took the time to sit down and think about that and explain why they opposed it and sent it to him. So I, I really appreciated his call. Okay. We do have an executive session tonight. We need to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate acquisition and potential litigation. And so we, we may, it, it, I'm not sure, but we may come out, come back out and take action on, on one or more of those items. So I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate acquisition and potential litigation. Mr. Goodwin made the motion. Mr. Grant seconded that motion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay.